We have 6:30. I think we appreciate everyone's willingness to let us close 20 or 30 minutes. We had a work session for our budget, a little earlier, so at this time we'll just move forward with all you hate. So, I'd like to ask everyone to stand at this time, please.
Well, some of us in the military, all of you probably got people involved in the military, scattered around the world, and they're always in trouble. I mean, they've got, we don't know what they face. Shiel and I know we did. Some others have been there. So, this time, we have a moment of silence, just to thank these people and the ones that are involved in the community that are having problems at this time. So, bow our head.
Amen. Thank you.
Please make standing. And I'm still, we have Dr. Duncan, we have the knife for a place. We've got Bryson Burke, raise your hand, Bryson. There you go. We've got Maurice McDay, raise your hand, good. We've got Chloe Tallent, good. Katelyn Tally, and Emily Lane, okay? And Scott Maslin.
I would like to make, if I can, to the board, getting middle schoolers to come to school is a challenge. To get them to come to this was an act of Congress. So, I hope the board doesn't mind, but in order for them to come, I made an arrangement for them not to take the end of grade test this year.
I thought it was something like tickets to all the Braves games this summer.
Well, I thought they came just to see what we did, so they'd make our places.
I am going to put them as well, though, if y'all would come up in front and turn their face.
And they're going to sing it.
They're singing, have y'all, that'd be great. Actually, if anyone just wants to see, but I think we need to have y'all face the flag. So, y'all.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. They're welcome, stays on the end of the meeting. Parents, thank you all for coming. Most of them don't drive just yet. Thank you for representing them, too.
Move forward, and as I've been told, we have a ballgame tonight, so I would tell the board we're going to move in a fast pace, try to, board members, that's our idea. Approval minutes, our regular scheduled meeting, January 28th. Any questions? If not, here, motion, we approve. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? So, move. Next on our agenda is spotlight on peak from programs, and this is Dr. Duncan's time to take over. It's Dr. Duncan.
Okay, we have three teachers that have, are being recognized for their renewals of their National Board certification. First one to need to come up, Tammy Newton. Tammy's at Dancom Hales School. And Colette Lovell, from MBI. And I'm going to see if I'm close on that. Yeah, okay. Thank you all, and congratulations to you. Appreciate you achieving that. I know that National Board certification is important.
Yeah, pictures, pictures, we love to have y'all show out for us, so that's great.
Okay?
Thank you, thank you. I know it's not easy, but great.
Okay, now, the other thing I have is, this is kind of an unusual thing for this month. I've heard Mr. Shiel's used the term "the cleanest dirty shirt." That's kind of what we have with our utility savings this month. No school was less than they were the month before. But, so we're giving award for the smallest increase, okay? And that's what we're going to do. The awards this year, we have a gold, and a silver, and a bronze award. The gold award for the smallest increase was South Macon Elementary School. All right. The increase for a very small percentage. Turned out our lights. Okay? And the silver awards, they just keep racking up. Franklin High School, there's increase, but it wasn't a big amount. It was. It won't be full of those, so. And the, how do I say this? Randy, I don't want to be offensive at all, okay? But you're in third place for having the third smallest, third smallest increase, okay? Everybody else, everybody else was above you. This is your bronze award.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We wish it, they would all, we didn't. We weren't able to give you a counting total this year because some of the bills had not come in at the time that we needed for the board meeting, but we'll pick that back up again in March. And we've done a great job with it so far, but we just have to work a little harder and try to keep that down, so we hope it will, we hope there'll be a decrease next time. So, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Duncan. I think also, do we have a presentation from the agricultural, agricultural department?
Well, we couldn't get them here because we couldn't promise that they didn't have to take their EOCs. I think they're hopefully at the ballgame tonight. So, you have a small token in front of you from the ag department, and thanking you for your support. Their ag department, as you know, has been around for a long, long time, and they have the largest student club at Franklin High School, of over 100 members. So, they just want to thank you for your support.
Extremely important for the high school.
I'm sorry, Chris.
Extremely important for the high school.
Agriculture, almost certainly.
FFA.
I think, may match ours, Indian State, I think we have the best.
God has no state formal award. I'm just exactly where I need to be professionally, closely in FFA. So, I appreciate that, appreciate what they do, and business, some of their program, and it's a great leadership program for, for the high school. A lot of kids do all their things. So, thank them for us, and sorry they couldn't be here. Don't think about them right. I've never had rhubarb, rhubarbs.
It's really good.
That's a rhubarb word right there.
There you go. We'll get you there. Next on the agenda, I think that does it on our spotlights and beginning. Next is our time that we, we call our public comment. This is time we invite anyone here that'd like to address the board. I would like to make sure that everybody stands. We're here to listen, we're not here to engage in conversation, or to take any action based off things that are told to us. So, we're here during this period, we simply listen to what you have to say to us. So, is there anyone here that would like to address the board at this time? And sign sheet, there's one right there. This time, you should say, going, going, gone. Okay. Moving forward, next on the, as our consent agenda, I understand there is one change, and John will make sure we do this the correct way. We have a field trip, fellow board members, I think, on their shows for the Devon deal, on behalf of the agricultural department, to go to Raleigh, March 4th, and field. I understand that has been canceled. So, that will be, is deleted from our consent agenda.
The motion would just be to approve the consent agenda with that.
Subject to that, that being a mission, to that being deleted. Any questions on the consent agenda? Any comments, any board members have?
I guess the custodian, just need, need any more?
No, we actually have a 12-month custodian resigned, and this gentleman was a 10-month custodian, and Mr. Brown would like that gentleman placed in that 12-month slot. And so, from now until the end of the year, we'll have a substitute custodian down there until we figure out what it is that we want to be made.
Any other questions?
So, you're minus two-month custodian, please minus one custodian, and you got?
Yes, sir. We have a, we have a small list of classified substitute employees, and we have someone that's filling that responsibility as substitute custodian right now.
Any other questions? Should have about the coaching assignments, anything at all? If not, there, a motion?
Motion to approve. We attempt the consent agenda, is, is then, with that deletion of.
Have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So, move. Moving next into, if I get to their personnel, Mr. Ward, have any updates that you would, you need to give us, or anything along those lines?
Interviews for Franklin High School principal will be next Wednesday, March 6th. It's an all-day event. We've got six people that we will be interviewing for that position, and we're looking forward to that opportunity. Place here, yes, sir, right here.
And once the board, and how soon do we feel? Would it be by the next meeting we will have a name?
I think we could.
Is that right, possibly?
If we find what we're looking for in that particular interview, yes, sir, I think we could.
Are you going to send us out a kind of time schedule?
Yes, sir. I've still got a couple, a couple of confirmations from a couple of individuals. I'm waiting on some yeses to come down, and when I get them, then I will send, or I'll actually send it to Dr. Duncan, he'll distribute it to the board, for timeline, what we're looking at.
I don't think we have a motion to personnel, just information. I think that's all we have on there, unless I missed something. Moving forward, under approval items, we've got Mr. Shepherd here for Cartoon J Elementary, jump rope for heart.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, honorable members of the school board. Cartoon J would like to have approved jump rope for heart, and I'm sure you're all aware of jump rope for heart, all proceeds go to the American Heart Association, and this will be Cartoon J Schools' 28th year in a row participating, and with your approval and support, we'd like to get that approved.
Motion to approve?
Motion, second. All in favor? Any opposed? So, move.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, golf, high school or golf fundraiser?
This is a golf tournament that Coach Williams has put on in the past several years, and it's just to, golf is non-revenue sport, so this is subsidies.
Any questions?
No questions.
A motion to approve, and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So, move. Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, sir, I think we have two on there for PTSO. One is a gravel raffle, two low, 16-ton each, two drawings, rose raffle, due date November 26th, March 15th, draw on March 15th. At our leadership class on the Friday, tickets will be $2 each, or six for 10. Number two is a pretty big undertaking, I believe my PTSO is ready. As Mr. Baldwin, Dr. Baldwin just said, MEC is a non-revenue school, so we have to do what we can to create some revenue. Selling 300 tickets at $100 a piece is very similar to the rotary raffle. One difference is that Mr. Crawford, the manager out of Smoke Mountain Chevrolet, has not given us a specific timeline. We're shooting for sell enough tickets, 250 is the minimum, to be able to draw on our graduation date of June 2nd at 2:00 PM, but that's not written in stone. The tickets will be sold, literature released about it will be, until we sell a minimum number of tickets. The draw will not happen until we sell that minimum number of tickets with the.
You're lousy rotary, you're right here.
No, we do not. I just see you representing PTSO, so. They know that it's a, it's a, it's a big bite to sell that many tickets for, $100, and I told them PTSO, of the struggles that some rotary members have of selling just a allotment of, I think it's five or 10, is a minimum allotment.
What do you do if you don't sell enough, all of them?
We'll, we'll return the money.
You'll sell them? Give them a used car.
And they'll also have a choice of the car. It's a little four-door, it's a Chevy, can't remember what it's called, or $10,000 in cash, which would mean more profit for our PTSO, if someone took the cash.
Any other questions? Mr. Gibbs?
No questions to approve?
Motion to approve, second. All in favor? Any opposed? Didn't hear a lot of ayes at that time, but I want to pose it. So, move.
Thank you.
Mr. Maslin, I think you have two, we'll do both at the same time.
The girls soccer, we got double spaghetti dinner tickets, they're very successful. We did that with boys soccer. Mr. Long is assistant on the girls team, he's been undertaking that, very successful. Band, we've, I don't think you've all heard of our band, but I think we've got one of the best middle school bands in the state, but they try to raise money since we have very few funds for band, but we'll have a talent show. The winners of that talent show will go compete in countywide talent show. What they do is with your ticket to get in, you get a vote for your favorite artist or act, and you can also buy extra votes, if you want to vote more than one time, and so you get up to five extra votes per person, $20 for adults and 10 students, so you can buy more votes.
That money goes to?
Bands, directly to bands.
No questions to approve his vote to get his fundraiser?
Motion to say, all in favor? Any opposed? So, move. Mr. Sutton?
Yes, on behalf of PTO, the one doing those swans fundraiser, we did one earlier in the year, basically send pamphlets home with the children, they can order online, or I believe maybe phone call in. Truck sets up with pre-orders that say, out in by Dalton's, or wherever we get permission to put the truck, and then percentage of the proceeds go to PTO. It's not the 50%, you know, like you're doing magazines and stuff, but there's absolutely very little work to do, other than sending the flyer home.
How much is the percentage, Mark?
I think it's only about 10%. And they get any walk-up sales that happen that day, too, so. Oh, we, I think last time we made between 300 and 500.
When you say walk-up sales?
If somebody's out there shopping at Lowe's or something, sees a truck, they can stop and buy something if they have it on stock on the truck.
And you get the portion of that on time?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? So, move.
I did that for another organization, it cost me a fucking lot. Maybe I'll freeze her.
We're hoping it's a bit better than that. Mr. Baldwin, you have two items, looks like one's a fundraiser, you're just very certain of what Mr. Shepherd had?
Yes, it's saying jump rope for heart for American Heart, we've been doing it in our K E department, so.
Your motion to approve?
Make it.
Mr. Hayes, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, move. And then, your student handbook.
Student handbook, there's just three changes, and we wanted to hurry up and get in, since I heard a little bit about the budget meeting, they're going to cut 5% by Friday, federal government, we're going to use Title I money. So, we use that to buy our planners, our communication tool, so. I do it now, at this time, use the Title I money for this year to pay for them for next year, and there's just three changes about parents communicating to the receptionist as opposed to leaving a voicemail, because oftentimes, teacher's busy, end of the day, mom wants him to ride the bus, or whatever, and we don't give that message, so we're changing that. And after a year, I deleted that charge of $10, which went away last year, board did that, and we just incorporated our terrific kids for their academic awards. So, that's really the only changes outside of dates.
All right, and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So, move. And Dr. Duncan? Yes?
I know we do a lot of, a lot of good things, a lot of fundraisers, a lot of things, jump rope for heart, it's been around a long time, Cartoon J system, 80 years for them, but also, we run into a little issue this year, and I've talked with the people involved in it, they're, they're asking us to do something related to Relay for Life, which has been a longstanding, supported type of thing by the schools, and I've asked them in the future to try to coordinate that, because if you end up with jump rope for heart, which is typically a February kind of thing, and then if you end up with something right on top of that, Relay for Life, and that's another request for funds right out, and those are funds that, yes, they benefit the school and publicity-wise, but the money typically goes to public search and things like that. So, I've asked them, since we know that that's in February, that maybe that the Relay for Life could move a little closer out from that, so that it wouldn't get on top of it. I think this year, that's happened, although a couple of principals have mentioned that today, and said, look, we want to do both, and so I did contact personally with the American Cancer Society, and I, and they're willing to, you know, they just did not realize their dates, or they use something around the spring, in case the board gets called, look, we just got to jump in the vote, and now we've got to do something else. But I'm working to try to get that coordinated, so that we can't go this year, next year, that it's out a little bit further, maybe put a month between them, or two, or something like that. So, just information.
Good idea. Next is the, I think this is our second reading, I'm sorry, transportation contract. Oh, there you go. Don't bring me.
I'm sitting in for Paula tonight. It's just one of her typical transportation contracts. It's an EC pre-K student who's out of district and has to be transported by their parent to the school.
Can we just play that up, EC line?
Yes.
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, move. Amendment to policy number 421, medication, Mr. Henning?
Mr. Chairman, this is the second reading of the amendment to the board's medication administration policy that simply makes clear that the board reserves the right for in its employees to not have to administer, it's not really bound to administer medication anyway, because like I told you last time, this essentially is the law, but I also wanted you to have it in policy, that your employees are not going to be engaging in what our nursing personnel tell us are medically risky administrations of medication. That's what this amendment does, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
A question.
Sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
We talked about, or it says here, it's must be prescribed by, it reads 3rd paragraph, by physician or dentist. All medications mentioned by school personnel during school hours must be prescribed by physician or dentist, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, then, let's see, is there a, just doing a quick scan. The next paragraph down, when medication is to be administered at school, school personnel shall communicate with the student's parent or guardian about its administration. Did we say it's only for doctors and dentists for administration? Did we just include the parent as a person then to tell us?
I think the, I think the reason it's in there that way is to try to urge the parent.
Do it at home?
Yes, sir. If you look, the second sentence of the paragraph just before that says, all medications that can be given outside school hours without adversely affecting the health of the student should not be administered at school. That's, that's an example of one of those things that we want to try to communicate to any parents who are asking us to administer prescription medications. And now, this will be another thing to point out to them and say, look, especially if this is not on-label, you know, prescription use of this drug, or if it's risky for some other reason, please do it at home.
Shiel's, I mean, the item in red there is the change, the other was old, I'd say old, that's current policy, but it does need to be emphasized that we cannot, and administrators, anybody working at school should not over the telephone accept a medication. It must be in writing, preferably personally by the, by the parent, and we don't keep a stock. We cannot keep anything that is a medication just for a headache, or just for something else. We can't, we are not a pharmacy nor a dispensary, and we don't need to be, and those, those needs need to be communicated to the student by the parent in writing, and we'll help where we can, but on ones that nobody says want to be administered, we're saying, we sure not want to do that. But as a matter of policy, we should not be doing anything without the parents, obviously we don't doubt the parents' permission, but sometimes a kid will say, well, you have a Tylenol, or aspirin, or ibuprofen? You sure don't. They have a box of them, but we don't need to be dispensing them, and by any means to anybody. So, we try to be sure we don't do that. So, if a parent called in and asked you to give, but if there's something, you wouldn't do that? I wouldn't, as a principal, I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't advise anybody to do it. I would say, you know, you bring me something in writing and say that they need to take this at 11:30, you bring it here, put it there, the label says what it is, I mean, and only for the amount of medication that's actually they're asking to give. So, now, some, some have to have a stock of it there, and they, they do keep it under lock and key, and all of that's administered, I've never had, sometimes you just need to remind people that that's the way you do business. I think that's the way we've been to it, right? And I think that's. Hope so.
I think it's important that the students and parents understand that the medication need to be kept in the office, the students don't need to be carrying that medication, even if it is a Tylenol or ibuprofen, they don't need to be carrying.
Whatever it is, it needs to be kept in the office, and it needs to be written. I mean, most people have a log, they log it out, wherever it's administered, I don't know.
I understand. So, yeah, the change is just in red. One quick, general question, healthcare provider, John, with that being there, that does open up the door for any, there's enough, the policy is specific, now, we talked about a doctor, the word healthcare provider is not opening up any type of angle, because healthcare provider can cover a wide range of different individuals.
Well, I mean, I think if, again, I think the law is that the board, and it's basically what that change to the policy says, the law is that the board and its, and its employees can use discretion in deciding that they don't feel comfortable with.
That covers the study.
So, if you get a prescription that says, you know, Joe Blow, which doctor?
Whatever.
You know, you don't have to do.
Just have that generic, it's not going to open up any doors. All right, enough said. This is the second reading, anyone have any other questions? If not, as a secondary motion, if we approve. Now, motion approved, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So, carried, so moved. Mr. Henning?
Mr. Chairman, this agreement is, this is a memorandum of understanding between Main County Schools and Department of Public Safety. It's, a situation happened, I'm told, down east somewhere, that a, a community corrections officer, and we're talking about probation officer, went onto a school property and without checking into the office, went straight into a classroom and got a student out and arrested him and all of it. It was a bad enough situation that it caused sort of a knee-jerk reaction, and we have a new statute that says essentially, every, that any probation visits on campus have to happen in a really prescribed manner. So, that's what this agreement is meant to do, that is meant to have that structure in place, means that, that community corrections officers come to the, come to the office first, they're to be given a private place to meet with the student, the students not, they're not the go-to, the student's classroom. So, that's what this agreement is just to go ahead and put in place, when and if we need it, which I think we seldom will, and I think most of our community corrections people around here are pretty good people, anyway. So, that's, that's the purpose of it, and I'm happy to answer any, any questions you may have about it.
We've had personal discussions with the supervisor on this whole region, his, Mr. Dallas McMillan, who's over there, I think, actually, maybe, maybe went to Manhale, I'm not really sure, school, but he knows that, he's done it, and it's, and it's just the fact that we're kind of in a position, if we don't do that, then they can't exercise the authority, they may need, or could we ask for your assistance if we're ever needed. Currently, we may have. Currently, we may have one, one adult person that qualifies for this, it's not something that's an everyday occurrence, you know, some years we have zero, but it's just to sort of placate and, and do the things that are necessary for both of us as agencies to cooperate one another. We've had a lot of discussion about it, and had several meetings, and, you know, that's, I didn't ask him to come because I felt like, you know, we've been enough advised on it to, to go forward with it. So, doesn't, there's no monetary issue involved here, so we're not worried about some, something popping up on the, around the understanding. That would, basically would be our, our understanding that this is the way this is going to operate, and would be in, in essence, policy, but not actually a written board policy as such.
One other thing I note for you, if you do approve this memorandum of understanding, you would be given your, I think the motion would be to authorize the superintendent to enter into this memorandum of, of understanding for the, for the district. It also comes with, and kind of go to that, that attachment, there's an attachment that's an exhibit for this agreement that is a release. Part of how that community correction program works is that they, they sort of keep tabs on, you know, if you're, if an adult was, had this sort of arrangement, it would be with stipulations like, "Keep a job, stay sober," that, that sort of thing. By the same token, a student who has this sort of arrangement, they're making a deal that they're also going to stay in school and get good grades and not, you know, not skip school and so forth. So, in order to let community corrections know as a part of this agreement, when a probationary student is not doing those things, we are getting a release, they're going to agree to get a release of information for us to be able to share those kind of details with, with community corrections. So, this, this exhibits part of that, that memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Chairman, we, also, we've got a policy working with law enforcement. Is this in addition to?
Yes, sir. We, I don't believe that that policy, if it was meant to address, I, I don't, I don't think anybody here thought about, you know, how we need probation officers on school property that, that we needed to, to address that. So it's not really aimed at working with them necessarily, and now there's a new statute that does specifically deal with them, and this is aimed at that.
So we've worked, so a probation officer is not a law enforcement? I don't know.
No, I'm not a hundred percent sure about that myself, but I mean, they, they are now given special direction that no other law enforcement officer, I mean, we needed to have an agreement for working with other, you know, policy to do that, for working with other law enforcement agencies, because they're really not bound by this kind of rule. They, if, we can have them and ask them to agree that those sworn officers are going to just charge right in and pull a student out of class, but if they did, there's really not anything we can do about it, and it would be legal. But it's not so for, for a probation officer anymore.
The one thing this gives us, if we have a person, and like I say, it's very rare, we may have one, we do have one, we, years we've not had any. But if that person's guardian or parent were to get in a medical situation where there was an emergency needed, and we needed to call the probation officer to the school to help us with that student, for whatever reason, that this would give us that ability to call and say, "Could you help us with it?" Absent this agreement, we can call them and they can say, "I'm sorry, you know, we're not allowed to do that." And technically, they're not at this point, without their agreement. So, it, it does not affect anything that we're doing with local law enforcement or any of their jurisdiction areas or anything of that nature. Now, what we would hope is if this happened, that that person would...
Mr. Hennig, the memorandum of...
How much is the favor of authorizing to enter into the memorandum?
What is that?
Any other questions, Mr. Shields or... Okay. Now, a motion, all in favor, soon if I say aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you, John.
Please work on that. Revision to the professional standards of public performance for our Main County School System employees. Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Under the second bullet, we want to reword or revise the way that is printed there before you. Understanding the differences between supervising kindergarten children and supervising twelfth graders, although at times, there are marked similarities, there is a difference in what supervision actually means, so we wanted to strike the words at all times and place appropriately in front of that word, and that's what we would like to bring forward with this.
All right, talk the conversation, last time we talked about this, I was...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shields runs that up.
Yes, sir.
Close the exception.
Have a motion second, and a second. Any other questions, comments? If not, your motion to approve? No, I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. It's going to be a long day, that's my own excuse. Okay. Moving forward then, I think it's to our first reading, we're revising the social networking policy. Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, this has been an ongoing process, and I would like to thank our local NCA members, as well as our state NCA members, our board attorney, analogy director, and other input from other sources. I feel like we have discussed this and volleyed it back and forth, and what we have now is something that is workable. So this is the first reading, and we would covet any feedback that could be provided to improve that document.
Of course, this is the first reading, board members, so we have, if anyone has any questions, I also have time before to look at it for the next meeting if something crops up that we find that we can revisit that time also, so. I've looked at it, Mr. Moore, to be honest with you, I'm going to have to look at it, to be honest with you, my time got away from me. I haven't read it yet, but I noticed a couple of things I was going to probably look at and look at.
Yes, we've added some things. We've also tried to eliminate, I guess the word would be site-specific language. Sound kind of technical.
Yeah, I see I'm doing good.
I'm good. So, words such as branding, which was specifically to Facebook, we tried to take that out because obviously that's specific to only Facebook, and to make sure that it covered a vast array of social networks which are being invented even as we sit here. So, we've learned about some over the past couple of weeks, which are brand new, which I had no idea. So, that is our first stab at it, and I appreciate any feedback that could be provided. Another thing, I guess, to make a point of, we've tried to differentiate too between personal and school-related. That's probably one of the most primary differences, because we do have school-related social networking sites that are good, good means of communication to teams, classroom activity, trying to separate the two.
Mr. Chairman, along with those comments, I hope we as a group can keep up with the, I think I can mention a person's name that's in the paper here, I, I'm a citizen that's going on now with that, the teacher that was at the community's high school who got charged. I, I think I can mention that person's name.
If it's in the paper, we can...
I hope we can keep up with the Tony Allen, AGNT of Joanne Hinton case. He had, he had received, he was a teacher at the community schools, received, he received some pictures from one of his students, and he turned that in to the authorities and charged him. And I think, says lawyers will tell you that once you're in possession of something illegal, whether you ask or you've got yourself a serious legal problem. And one thing that, this is under John Boyle, one thing that you said in here, he says here, "The lesson I hope young teachers will take from the case is, first of all, never give out your telephone number to students, and certainly do not friend them on Facebook or other social network sites." And I hope we can kind of keep up with what's going on with this young man, with this teacher here that received this information, and it could happen to any of us. But the law says, you're guilty, you can have your whole career ruined with that. Are any of you keeping up with this? Is this something that's due to you?
There's, there's so many different cases out there, so this is one of our...
What's going on?
Oh, yes, sir.
Now, this one, to be honest, is particularly worrisome to me, that we have an educator who, through no fault of his own, who said something, he acted appropriately, and the way I read it, Mr. Shields, is that right? And informed it yet, he's going to be charged with a crime, so it makes...
Didn't he receive texts? Is that...
He received pictures.
Pictures through texts? I guess my other question is, what is this student's doing with his phone number?
That's what I'm saying here, but I've talked to some people, asking, "Do students know your cell phone number?" They said, "Yes, students know my cell phone."
Well, that's, that's...
So you're really, on A six is, is that the part of it?
Everything is so, this is, as I said, everything is so new, this, this is, each one of these cases, as they come about, it's great in the world out there, I guess, is what we're saying.
I think John Boyle went on to say there, "This is the way you destroy your career," by doing what he thought was right.
Yeah, I don't know what, and I don't know what actually his district took against him, and I haven't read it.
They dismissed him?
Did they dismiss him?
Yeah.
It might be more to it than just...
That's what I'm saying, I think we should watch, but from what I understand, on one side, it's, received something in an innocent manner.
Sure. Well, and I only ask to point out that, you know, if, even if he was pure as a driven snow and wanted to turn that in to, to authorities, they wouldn't, they wouldn't necessarily see it that way, and they'd have to investigate and find out, you know? And that's, yeah, that's something, and I think that's part of what the, the purpose of this policy is to get, it's not really, it's to get our employees to think as much about the trouble that lies down that, that path, if they're not very, very careful with those communications, whether they, you know, even if they are of pure intent, you know? So that's, it's an interesting case. I definitely will follow it.
That's a good question. You passed, I don't, you said your employees, like, I don't hear a lot of coaches that are volunteer coaches and aren't considered employees. Does this still apply to them?
They are employees.
Even if they're not paying off...
If we, this board approves each volunteer coach and each, each substitute, so for the technical purposes of that policy, they are our employees.
In every way, yeah, no, it's exactly, in every way, except they don't get paid, which might become like more of our employees.
There's also a big argument, like you was saying today, about the impact of social media, it's a disruptive environment, the rules on the road are not clear, about what we say and how we treat each other, that all changes in one direction, the impact and feedback are instantaneous, you can cause great damage in an instant.
First reading. Any other questions, comments?
Do you have a question?
Would that include subscribing to someone's YouTube account? Because that's a social network too.
There's, there's four or five of them, you mentioned in here.
And in Google Plus too.
Yeah. As much from names as possible, because things are invented just one right after the other. We try to make it, I guess, I guess the word generic would be the best word, but...
Now, we'll move on into the agenda. Next, under building the grounds. Do you have a... For a first reading?
Did you vote to accept?
No. Do we, do we have to vote to accept the first reading?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, sorry.
My closing that we said first reading.
Okay. Now, motion second. Any questions? If not, all in favor, soon if I say aye. Any opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Now, I think we're going to build the grounds. Under prickled instruction, I didn't see anything, our president was there, okay. Building the grounds, freshen my memory, guys, we had, board was polled, we approved about the improvements to our baseball facilities. We don't have to take any further action on that other than just information purposes for friends that are in the press, that they know what we're referring to.
When you motion again, even though we approved...
Even if this is a poll, do you still need a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, John. Well, so...
I make a motion.
There you go. Now, motion second. Everyone's had a chance, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? So moved. I'm excited, I think this is going to be a big advance for programs there. This is finance, approval items, Angie, fund redistributions, and let's just, they're all Franklin, this will fit all three, we're approving them all, that's all right with you.
Okay. The first one is, they're actually cleaning, cleaning up some old accounts that have not been used in quite a while, so they're using the PE juice machine money and the girls' PE, and they're transferring into the PE uniform account. The next one is, they are transferring twenty-five hundred dollars out of the locker account and seven hundred from the parking account into their general miscellaneous fund, for a total of thirty-two hundred dollars transferred. The next one is also cleaning up an old account, a drug testing account that had nine hundred and seventy-five dollars in it, and they are moving that into also the general miscellaneous account.
Would that drug testing money not go back into the drug testing money?
Well, we pay for drug testing out here, and I'm not sure, and nobody seems to know why that drug testing account was ever set up at Franklin High.
Do you know what it is?
My question, Dr. Ballers, what's that PE juice stuff? That sounds like some kind of performance enhancement.
We don't want to know.
Oh.
Program.
But is that a general fund?
Steroid program.
Fiddle program.
It's obviously money that's collected at the school level.
On the drug testing?
On the drug testing from somewhere, because we've taken over for the last several years and paid all the drug testing from this loca, from central office fund, so I'm not sure.
The ABC, they put some money, I believe they, a lot of this, next dollar, ABC, still in, back group.
And probably previously, it was just Franklin High that was conducting any type of drug testing, so that's probably where the money, y'all probably purchased kits and everything.
ABC, I believe.
Well, because ABC money, I, I believe, should probably go back into drug testing funds.
Let me make sure I understand, if it's ABC money, then that would be appropriate to go back into general, correct? If that's where it came from?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be...
Angie?
I would think so, yes.
But if it was, I guess our question is, I know I'm talking for Stephanie, she's going to smack me, if it was originally set aside from a specific fund designated for drug testing, well, my response is it needs to go back into drug testing. That's, so I guess what questions, we know, we don't have a clue where it came from.
I don't.
How much is now?
Last year, we got, what, something like fifty dollars, fifty-two dollars, something in the tire can.
ABC?
Forty-two. I knew it was a big, big amount. You pay for about six kits. Well, they didn't pay for six kits. Five dollars in tax, five kits in tax.
I guess the question is, if the money was appropriated out of the general fund for drug testing, then it needs to go back to the general fund. If somebody, if some individual or organization donated that money to Franklin High School for the purpose of drug testing, and hasn't been used in over a year, then that money is subject to, to, to go to the high school general fund, unless there were stipulations placed on it. on it, which you would have to.
We haven't done it in three years. It's been there, it's been sitting there for three years.
So, it's a dormant account, the money's not being used, so either bring it back over here and buy kids with it, depending upon where we go with that, or we let them use it in their general fund as they seek it. That's. Ball, your general fund, it's over here?
We don't, we don't generate any money. With coat machines down, picture monies going down, we could definitely use it.
That would make a total of $7,100 in their general fund.
That's our, I'd like to leave any kind of principal, some direct, this fifty million.
Clean out every account before you leave. Is that something, do you need to make a motion, I'm just a single one? If it's legal, I'd like for it to go back into the general account. You've got junior seniors, you've got all of the monies, graduation, you're going to be indicating.
And I'm okay with it, if that's legal, I just know that when I was sitting on the board where we gave it to drug testing, it was very specific, and you were not, I mean, if it went back to it, there would be a problem, because it was very specific to where that money went to. So, that's my only question, because I remember when we were there.
I can't honestly remember the ABC money ever being given to a specific school. Since I've been here, it's always come to us out here, so you might come help me on when this account was set up and.
I could have helped you or Miss Brown, or somebody in the county.
Yeah, wasn't there when I was there, so I'd have to go back to it. And I think Ms. Tabor had asked all three of those in my office. Nobody remembers.
If there's any questions, we can defer to this until next meeting.
I can try to find out some more information about it.
What your life, yours, at the same time, there's also movement. If we don't know where it came and done, I don't think we're going to be issued, if we're allowed to go to the general fund, so.
I just know he's got graduations, he's got junior seniors, he's got some.
And we did try to follow with my.
I make a motion to accept. Are you, are you a little?
A motion to accept all the fund that reached recent report as presented for Franklin High School, there are second. A motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Dr. Duncan?
Yes, I'm asking for, basically permission for us to request bids for mowing services. Talked about this a couple of times, I think it's time that we see what the competitive market is out there. We have been looking at buying a lot of lawn mowers and expensive lawn mowers for the schools, and we've also been using the custodians to do most of the mowing around the schools. This would give them an opportunity to do, be in the school and doing that, rather than out having to go to grass. But the process is that we, if you give me permission to, in essence, put this bid on the street, then we would do the things that are necessary to bring it back to you in March, or we're beating for your, for information and possible approval to get this thing going by the first of April. So, just, but I need your, I don't want to go out and request bids on something that you all have not approved.
So, do you want to motion in that effect?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion to give Dr. Duncan permission to go out on the streets and get bids for the services for the grounds of the school, so he's.
I have one thing on the quiz.
As I said, it's a motion, we need a second, then we can talk about this. So, here's a second. Now, Mr. Shields.
I ask that they not mow during instructional time, this is the key to it, because when you use your custodians, they're up around your windows during instructional time, make sure they use it non-instructional. Bid will be so specified, and it will be so specific, probably they'll wonder when they can, but. We have testing dates in there, and we have closest to the building and those kind of things, so I'll send you a copy of the, specifically prepared, I'll send you a copy, all of your copy of that, so if somebody asks you about it, and you say, well, sure, here it is, and you gotta request a copy of the bid, and we will send it to as many people as we know that are already in that business, not to exclude anybody, but it will be pretty tight in terms of reliability, in terms of what they have to provide with us and what we have to provide, which basically they have to demonstrate themselves, they need to insure, all those kind of things, and when we see it, I think it would be a positive bid, and they eliminate a lot of people who just don't have a lawn mower, weed eater, you know, you can't afford to have that, if somebody's not bonded, or somebody doesn't have the insurance anyway, not necessarily bonded, they need to have some insurance that covers them and their materials and supplies and everything else. Thank you, I'll send a copy.
We have a motion second, any other questions? All in favor, soon if I say an aye. Any opposed? So moved. I think for Department of Education information, Dr. Duncan, are we live for life?
Well, that's what I just mentioned a little bit before, they're asking to have an elementary school classroom, encourage students to collect the loose change and plastic Easter eggs from February 22nd to March 22nd. I have absolutely no problem with that at all, but I did ask, I did send Ms. Bishop an email correspondence to see if they could move that, so that it didn't actually conflict, because that does in a way conflict, I think, probably with the jump rope for Heart, or Randy, the same thing, I mean, they're just.
Too much at one time.
Too much at one time, and we can avoid that, and they're willing to do that. The Relay for Heart Association, I mean, there's no need to ask them, because that's a February event that's been the same thing for 28 years, and it's easy enough for them to accommodate that movement next year with it, but not to discourage it, I mean, the contribution may be down simply because of the timeframe, but we always participate, it's a great activity, and we're, I'm just saying, I'm asking your permission for us to do that with the understanding that they know that it may not be as big as they have had in the past due to other fundraisers during the same time.
So, your question, we would give you a consent to change the time that they're talking about, or.
Well, I've requested that, but I think this year, since they've already got all their stuff, and it's, and it's kind of related around the Easter egg type of kinds of things, and that's why they're trying to get everything picked up by March 22nd, because Easter's on March 31st, and next year, it will be resolved itself because of the calendar, because Easter is later, much later next year than it is this year. I'd like for you to approve that, if you would.
Request from the.
Make a motion.
Have a motion. A motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. In our joint session with our commissioners.
County Commission, joint session tomorrow night at 6 o'clock at the Bank and Bank and Trust corporate offices of bypass in here at Franklin, and we will plan to be there.
All board members will be in there also, and it will be downstairs, I believe it is, in their meeting area, correct? Is that right? I mean, all, well, the board was invited, Dr. Duncan. The panel will be in there, and everyone else is invited, so it would be very productive. And then superintendent information?
I don't have any, just a lot of events, a lot of spring activities and things like that, but that's a problem. You know, that's not public information that I need to relate to.
That's all we've had to think on our formal agendas, is people moving out, anything else, bring it forward to the board tonight.
Any questions?
We adjourn. Second. All in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Thank you all coming out tonight.